...place on Wednesday, March the 7th, beginning at 12:30 PM here in the council chambers. I remind the council that the next hearing of citizens, the next council meeting will take place under the new council rules. The primary, the most significant change in those rules will be the fact that the hearing of citizens will follow the business meeting. Onto the regular agenda. Council of the whole to accept the reports and recommendations of the boards and commissions.
Council of the whole, roll call.
Amador?
Yes.
Baraka?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Tanna?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
President Payne?
Yes.
B is an ordinance amending section 23:15-4 yield intersections. This would revise the yield sign regulations. Council of the whole to adopt.
Roll call.
Amador?
Yes.
Baraka?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Tanna?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
President Payne?
Yes. B is an ordinance amending section 23:15-4 yield intersections. This would revise the yield sign regulations. Council of the whole to adopt.
Roll call.
Amador?
Yes.
Baraka?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Tanna?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
President Payne?
Yes. Mr. President, the ordinance adopted on first reading this evening will be advertised in accordance with law, and a public hearing will be held at the council meeting of March 7th, 2012, beginning at 12:30 PM here in the council chamber. Ordinance on public hearing, second reading and final passage. 6 PSNFA is an ordinance amending section 23:12-1 crosswalks designated. This would designate a mid-block crosswalk at Mount Vernon Place. Is there anyone present that wishes to be heard on this ordinance?
We're gonna, excuse me ma'am, but we're gonna move, move to defer.
To defer?
It ain't on the paper here.
The public hearing will remain open?
Yes. Hearing open, yes.
We are deferring to...
You're gonna defer it?
Yes, ma'am.
But you ain't got it on the paper. Please put it on the paper next time, sir.
No, we're doing, we're deferring it now. It wasn't in the paper. We're deferring it.
It was, it's about to get on, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
We are deferring to...
Special.
Special, um...
Wednesday.
The 22nd, February 22nd. Council of the whole to defer.
Roll call.
Amador?
Yes.
Baraka?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Tanna?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
President Payne?
B is an ordinance amending section 23:52 parking prohibited at certain times. This would prohibit parking 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM Monday through Friday on Clifford Street. Move to defer. Council of the whole to defer. Public hearing will remain open. Do the special on February 22nd.
Council of the whole, roll call.
Amador?
Yes.
Baraka?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Tanna?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
President Payne?
Yes. C is an ordinance to amend and supplement Title 34 Transportation, Chapter 1 Taxi Cabs. This will repeal section 32:1-5C and restore previous language regarding number of licenses to be issued.
And move to defer.
Move to defer to the special.
To the special.
Public hearing will remain open.
Second.
Roll call.
Amador?
Yes.
Baraka?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Tanna?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
President Payne?
Yes. B is an ordinance amending section 23:53 parking prohibited. This is the taxi stands. Council President, I would need one more deferral on this item. Okay. Council of the whole to defer?
Yes.
Roll call.
Amador?
Yes.
Baraka?
Yes.
Council of the whole.
Trump?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Tanna?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
President Payne?
Yes. Resolution.
President, before we move to the next one, I have asked twice that the, that Mr. Nada, I believe it is.
Quachado.
Quachado, I'm sorry. Mr. Quachado supplied us with a list of proposed sites, and this is the third meeting that I've asked, and I still have not received that information. So, on motion, once again, I'd like to request it.
Can I get everybody started here? What do you say? Can you talk to the president?
Yes.
Talking.
She couldn't hear you.
We're gonna also, Council President, plan a meeting with the ABC and Taxi, I mean, excuse me, Taxi Commission, and...
Looking over the sights.
To be able to talk about these taxi stands.
Absolutely.
Coming up anyway, with the committee.
Will, and, do you wanna do this at the committee level?
Yeah, we wanna have a meeting probably as soon as we can, so we can invite Hector Quachado, and we could talk at length about this.
Okay. Staff will speak with you about, uh...
And we'll, we'll come up with a date to have him up.
Yes.
All right. Okay, what's next?
Resolutions. Resolution 7R1A is an authorizing resolution for the Department of Administration for bid contract for street sweeper services. Council members, at yesterday's meeting, we had indicated that the state needed to review this. We have been informed that they, they have released this, this and the next resolution, so the council can, if you wish, adopt them.
So, they, they've gone over them and...
They've gone over the, these two contracts, so they're, they're, they're good to go, if you wish.
We should have...
Okay. You said the state did this?
The state has done their review of the, of the contracts.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Ramos.
Yeah, I, I mean, the fact that the administrator put on the record yesterday that the state was reviewing this, you know, prevented me from asking some questions that I may have had through the purchasing department, so, you know, I personally won't be supporting these.
Mr. President.
Until I have an opportunity to talk to them.
Well, no. Mr. President.
Councilman Amador. There are also some questions regarding the performance of this company, especially in days that rains and, and so on. We had difficulty in the past in, in getting some answers as to the fact that there are days that they don't even work. So, this is an opportunity for us to, when we talk about this, these, these two contracts, to go over with the owners of, of this company and, and point out some things that, that need to be improved. With counsel pleasure. So, what I'm, what I'm suggesting is that we defer this to a special meeting.
Well, Council President, I don't wanna vote for a period, so, I don't know if we defer it then, I mean...
No, I'm not gonna vote for it.
Maybe we could vote, I mean, we should, uh...
Put her please.
This is privatizing.
So, if, I don't know if we defer it, what that's gonna do, if we talk to the owners, I mean, what are we gonna ask them to do? I don't understand, except to...
Sweep your streets.
We can put it out.
Mr. President?
You never know what happens.
My, 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 I don't know, my colleague's pleasure is, I, I say vote it up or down. I, I don't, I don't necessarily need to defer, but if my colleagues have questions, they wanna ask questions about it, I don't mind deferring, but I'm, I'm ready to vote my conscience on this now, so.
The other, the other issue here is that you're taking a chance of, if you voted up and, or down, and if it passes, you don't have an opportunity to have a second shot at it.
Yes, we can always reconsider.
And this'll end up in emergency contract, so...
All right, well...
Company end up getting awarded a contract anyway.
Is there a motion to defer?
That's why I think we should defer, discuss with the purchasing agent.
Mm-hmm.
And then decide what we wanna do.
Can they do, this doesn't fit the criteria for emergency contract, though. We had already put the, you know, stipulations in place, a process for them to have, and requirements for emergency contracts. This doesn't fit that. So, I don't see how they could sneak it in as an emergency contract either. I think we should just vote it down.
What's the motion here?
I said, "I'm motion to defer."
You have a motion to defer?
I'll move to defer.
But somebody made a motion to defer?
I did.
Oh.
There are some other issues, Mr. President, that I would not reveal in public that I'm concerned with.
Okay.
With these two contracts. All right, there's a motion as second on the floor to defer.
President, can we do A and B together?
Yes.
B is also the street sweeping contract. This is, B is the east and south ward, A is the central and north ward.
Mr. President, so what happened to those of us who want to vote no?
Let's, let's, hold it, hold it. Let's, we have a motion as second on the floor. We'll move to a vote, and then we can ask questions that we need.
Defer with an invite.
Defer with an invite. Roll call.
Roll call.
Amador?
Yes to defer.
Baraka?
No.
Trump?
No.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Tanna?
No.
Ramos?
Yes to defer.
Rice?
No.
Sharif?
Yes to defer.
No. L, is there an alternative motion?
Counselor of the whole, our motion that we vote on it.
I make a motion, we vote on it now.
Council of the whole to... Council of the whole to adopt. Roll call to adopt.
Amador?
No.
Baraka?
No.
Trump?
No.
Gonzalez?
Abstain.
Tanna?
No.
Ramos?
No.
Rice?
No.
Sharif?
No.
Okay, it fails to adopt, and it is failed to defer. We are, it is, it's based on this to defer.
Back to the drawing board.
Back to the drawing board.
It's a mandate.
We just did it.
Just did it.
Mr. President, since we've had the, the two decisions, can we consider motion to return to administration?
If you have a second, yes.
Second.
Roll call to return to administration, A and B. Trump, Baraka.
Amador?
Yes.
Baraka?
Yes.
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Tanna?
Yes to return.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
President Payne?
Both contracts. Let's go to, C is an authorizing resolution for the Department...
One more issue, I'm sorry. Councilman, President, can we invite Local 617 back to the meeting to discuss with us the prospects of getting the employees of the city to do these jobs that we privatized out, so he can give us...
No.
Huh?
No, you can't.
Can't do that?
No. Why? The council cannot sit with the unions.
I mean, we're not trying to negotiate with them.
Yeah, but, Mr. President...
We just want them to make a presentation.
Counselor right. Yeah, the, the problem is, though, you're right, but, but the issue is, is we're entering what they would call the bargaining process. I know, not directly, but indirectly, because we're talking about services that they can provide and actually having them compete. I, I, I agree with you 100%. I just know what, what the laws are gonna say, the councilmen, because I also back me up, but I just know what the state contracting laws are gonna forbid us from actually having conversations about. But there's gotta be a way we can do this, so maybe EJ and, and Ron can, can tell us some other ways that we can do this, though.
They can't give us a, 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 without meeting with us, they can't send us anything either?
Councilman, they can, you can talk to them, but you cannot sit with them as a, as a, as a body.
I understand that, but can we, can he, can they give us something written and presented to us?
They did have something.
Right, can, can we have something written, presented to us, without him, I mean, he comes right here and, and does it here?
I assume he can give you a doc, a written document.
All right.
He did in the past.
C is an authorizing resolution for the Department of Administration to use a federal contract for the construction of a mobile emergency operations center. D is a ratifying, authorizing resolution for the Department of Administration for contract with subrecipient for youth services. E is a ratifying and authorizing contract with the Department of Administration for temporary emergency appropriation.
Counsel President, I'm sorry.
Where are we, um, are these all temporary appropriations?
We're starting. You wanna do C and D separately?
I just have a question about 7R1D.
I have a question about 7R1C.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, let's not get too far ahead, because members might wanna vote separately on it, considering I have issues, okay?
Then, we are at C and D at this point, or do you want to separate them as well?
Yeah, I just want, I have a question about D, yes.
All right, then, let's, let's do the vote on, the roll call for 7R1C.
I have a question on 1C.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
Where is the emergency center going to be? I thought that, that was the purpose of the building on Clinton Avenue and Bergen Street. I thought that's where...
That's a truck.
It's a mobile, it's a truck.
Mobile center.
Going all over.
In the event that there's...
No, it's not a grant.
It is, it is.
It is a grant.
Yes.
But it's a grant.
I know, I'm saying...
Okay, 'cause I have that highlighted.
Yeah, they, they came, they came before at the pre-council and said it was a grant, so we, uh...
So, it's something that's gonna move about?
It's a mobile unit, like, in the event that there's an emergency in any ward, they can move that truck to the, to the different areas and, and tackle the emergency.
Okay.
From there.
Thank you.
All right.
I'm fine.
Counsel of the hold, of the hold to adopt, C?
Roll call.
Amador?
Yes.
Baraka?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Tanna?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
President Payne?
Now, 7R1D is the contract for youth services with Hope Worldwide.
What is this? I, I just want...
Who is it?
This, this is CDBG money.
Yeah, but what are the youth services they're providing, and, I mean, who is Hope Worldwide LTD in Florham Park?
Yeah, where, where are they serving in, you know, what areas are they servicing in North?
And they're from Florham Park. I don't understand what's going on.
Someone wanna pull the documents line?
Just defer it.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to defer this.
Okay. Never mind, never mind.
Motion to defer.
Have we batted about the CDBG fund?
Motion to defer.
Have we batted as a committee?
Roll call.
I think so, yeah.
The CDBG committee met, they presented the point. Yes to defer.
Baraka?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Tanna?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
President Payne?
Yes. Now, 7R1D is the contract for youth services with Hope Worldwide.
What is this? I, I just want...
The grant?
Who is it?
This, this is CDBG money.
Yeah, but what are the youth services they're providing, and, I mean, who is Hope Worldwide LTD in Florham Park?
Yeah, where, where are they serving in, you know, what areas are they servicing in North?
And they're from Florham Park. I don't understand what's going on.
Someone wanna pull the documents line?
Just defer it.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to defer this.
Okay. Never mind, never mind.
Have we batted about the CDBG fund?
Motion to defer.
Baraka?
Have we batted as a committee?
Roll call.
I think so, yeah.
The CDBG committee met, they presented the point. Yes to defer.
Baraka?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Tanna?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
President Payne?
Yes. Counsel President?
Yes.
Counselman Sharif.
I had asked over a year ago, that when these things come before us, attached, there should be some page on scope of services to say what it does, and a lot of these, even when we get our packages and you turn them, it's just boilerplate, and it doesn't really talk about what the scope of services are. And that would make it done easier for us to consider these things, and that's one additional page only that they'd have to attach to these items, and so, a motion to whomever, again, grants management, that when these things come up in the future, you know, I'm not saying whether or not this is good or bad on the merits, as Counselman Baraka said, it's very difficult for us if we don't have that page which says what these services are.
Can I make a friendly motion?
Know what we want.
To that, Mr. President?
Counselor right.
Just, just that if, if there's not compliance to your, to your motion, Counselman Sharif, that you may wanna draft an ordinance requiring that be part of any kind of package that says this.
Okay.
We just need to legislate that into law and make it part of the requirement of the package.
All right, so where are we?
We are at 7R1E, which is an authorizing, ratifying and authorizing resolution for temporary emergency appropriation to provide emergency preparedness through planning, training, and equipment acquisitions. F is a ratifying, authorizing resolution for the Department of Administration for temporary emergency appropriation to provide sexually transmitted disease outreach and educational services. G is a ratifying and authorizing resolution for the Department of Administration for temporary emergency appropriation for the truancy alternative program.
And that's, that's with the county of Essex, correct?
Yes.
All right.
H is a ratifying and authorizing resolution for the Department of Administration for temporary emergency appropriation for the truancy alternative program.
Through H.
Through H. Counsel of the whole?
Roll call.
Amador?
Yes.
Baraka?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Tanna?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
President Payne?
Yes. H is a ratifying and authorizing resolution for the Department of Administration for the transfer of CDBG funds. K is an authorizing resolution for the Department of Administration for the transfer of CDBG funds. Counselman Ramos wishes to be sponsor on K.
Second.
With Counselman Tanna.
L?
L is an authorizing resolution for the Department of Administration for the transfer of CDBG funds.
M?
M is an authorizing resolution for the Department of Administration for the transfer of CDBG funds.
Through M.
Through M. Counsel of the whole, with the exception of K, which has sponsors.
Roll call.
Amador?
Yes.
Baraka?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes, but I'd like a list of the organizations.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Tanna?
Quintana?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
President Payne?
Yes.
7R1N is an authorizing resolution for the Department of Administration to use a state contract to purchase vehicles.
This is funny.
Mr. President, didn't we get some of these cars?
Yes, we did.
A while back?
Yeah.
I don't think I've seen them in the last.
And they beating us up about cars we drive.
This vehicle was for a specific, what was this?
No, this vehicle is for the.
It's going into the Department of Economic and Housing. Order, please, order, order. We'll get it, we'll get the answer. This vehicle is being purchased by the Department of Economic and Housing Development.
Absolutely not.
To move around the city for the various projects that they're working with.
Well, yeah. President, I spoke to Mr. Cruz yesterday regarding the situation. This vehicle is only going to be used for just to work. This.
For what, for what?
Just for work. Within working hours. It's not going to be taken home. It's not one of these vehicles you're going to take home. That's what they're, that's what they said to us. It's just to go out to field.
And let me tell you something, bro, don't take home. They be talking about the vehicle we have, I get stranded every other day.
Well, let's talk, we'll talk about it later.
That's, you know, that was the information that was presented to us. We're going to put it up for a vote and it goes.
Up or down?
I, I think the other issue is that on purpose, they say that passenger vehicles, automobiles, vans and SUVs, for $23,000, I don't think they're going to go too far with all these involved. They're probably buying one bill, one automobile.
I think that's just a line item, they buy this from the state.
Yeah, it's one.
That's one.
All right, let's vote. Council of the whole.
To adopt?
Roll call.
Amador?
Absolutely not.
Baraka?
No.
Trump?
N O.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Quintana?
Abstain.
No.
Rice?
No.
Sharif?
No.
No. Maybe he wants a new car.
Alternative motive, motion?
Excuse me?
An alternative motion?
Mr. President. President.
Roll to the next agenda.
Before, before we could take any votes as such, and now I have a question. For many council meetings, I have requested, who has vehicles? Who takes the vehicles home? And those questions have not been answered.
Can I use that?
What vehicles are assigned to the mayor's office from the police department? And those questions have not been raised. So when they answer those questions, then we should be able to deal with this. We need to know who all the aides to the mayors who got vehicles, where they live, who takes a car home, and what's the purpose? Because we have a lot of cars in the fleet, and we don't even know who's taking these cars home, where they're taking them. As a matter of fact, you have a finance director that takes a car to Cherry Hill. Okay, I mean, this is how serious this matter is. And then you take the Star Ledger and beats the council about some car that's falling apart. And some people in the administration are driving these new Dodge Chargers. I mean, it's just sad.
Mr. President, can I just say one quick thing just to add?
Councilman Rice.
Just, we've been zeroed out the budget, and so I think we need to be corresponding cuts to the administration as we restore our budget.
That's right.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we can't get pencils.
And everybody thinks we have gold pens, Mr. President.
All right. All right, Mr. Clerk.
O is an authorizing resolution for the Department of Administration for the use of a state contract for the purchase of a dump truck.
Council of the whole. Roll call.
Now?
Hey, what is this? I don't know what this is. Abstain.
Dump truck for the water.
No. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Might be assigned to the.
Might be assigned to the watershed.
No.
You're right.
No.
President Payne?
No.
The president, does that confidential place?
P is an authorizing resolution for the Department of Administration for a bid contract to provide a robot dragon runner. I believe this was explained to the council by the OEM director.
Robots, what are we doing there?
I'd like to be the sponsor of this resolution.
Second.
We don't need any robots.
Roll call.
We got some.
Yes.
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 privatization.
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
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 Q is an authorizing resolution for the Department of Administration for bid contracts for the maintenance and repair of Newark Water System plumbing stations? Pumping station? Pumping stations?
Council of the whole.
Council of the whole to adopt?
Amador?
Yes, it's maintenance of the facility.
Baraka?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Quintana?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
President Payne?
R?
R is an authorizing resolution for the Department of Administration to use a state contract for flares.
Lot of flares. Council of the whole. Yes.
Baraka?
Yes.
Abstain.
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
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 S is an authorizing resolution for the Department of Administration for bid contract for drugs and pharmaceutical supplies. T is an authorizing resolution for the Department of Administration for bid contract for first aid kits and refills. Through 7R1T, council of the whole.
I'm surprised we don't have a company from Mexico or Colombia on the 7R1S. One from Pennington, where's Pennington? Ohio. Abstain.
Baraka?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Quintana?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
President Payne?
Yes.
U is a ratifying, authorizing, and amending contract for the Department of Administration to amend Resolution 7R1L from the meeting of November 7, 2011, to remove one of the awarded vendors. B is an authorizing contract for the Department of Administration to use a state contract for facilities MRO lighting products.
Mr. Chairman? Councilman? Did we get any justification why they're removing this one vendor on U?
The, I believe the vendor requested to be removed.
They've state contract. No, on U is a bid contract.
Through 7R1V, council of the whole?
Council of the whole. Yes.
Baraka?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
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 7R1W is an authorizing resolution for the Department of Administration for a bid contract for solid waste collection. This item is one of those on the list where the state has requested that we hold off on until they've had an opportunity to review it. Council of the whole to defer?
Roll call.
This is the waste management?
Yes.
This is the Soundwater garbage collection.
Amador?
Yes, to defer.
Baraka?
Yes, to defer.
Yes, to defer.
Yes.
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, for the time being.
Yes.
So, I'll just, Council President, I mean, why can't we just do to this what we did to the other one? Can we reconsider and just do to this what we did to the other two?
Absolutely.
It'll remain on the agenda since the same result.
Yes.
Sales adoption just stays on the agenda.
Send a message. It'll stay there either way. You defer or do whatever.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman.
I move for reconsideration.
Well, might I remind the council that the state monitor has asked us specifically that we defer action on this contract?
So what?
Yeah, that was. My response, so what?
Motion to reconsider? Trump, second.
Baraka?
What do you think?
Well, I think this will be a test case to see what the state, how involved the state is in these matters.
Roll call.
Amador?
To reconsider?
To reconsider?
Yes.
Yes.
Baraka?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes, to reconsider.
Quintana?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes. Yes, to reconsider.
Yes.
What's the democracy?
What's the motion on the reconsideration?
Is there a motion?
Motion to table.
Same mover and second to?
Can we return this to administration?
Return to administration.
Someone has to make a motion.
I'll second that. I'll second that.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
There's no motion yet.
I made a motion to return to administration.
Okay, second, roll call.
Amador?
Yes.
Baraka?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Abstain.
Quintana?
Yes, to return.
Ramos? Rice?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Yes.
Adopted. 7R2A is an authorizing resolution for the Department of Child and Family Wellbeing for a professional services contract to assist in the organization and assignment of medical staff in concert with the clinical director. Council of the whole to adopt?
Roll call.
Amador?
Yes.
Baraka?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Quintana?
Yes.
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Sharif? President Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Ramos?
Yeah, would it be possible for us to have the Health Department Director come in at some point and explain to us what the role of this individual is?
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, and to clarify whether that individual is full-time or part-time, because that's a lot of money for a part-time contract.
Yes, you're right, that's true.
Like this invite for this special next week?
Yes.
I'm sorry, that's my thought. Absolutely. You already began to work, because the contract started at January 4.
I know, I know. And we voted, and we voted yes.
What are we voting for?
We're ratifying it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, what's next, sir?
7R3A is a ratifying, authorizing resolution for the Department of Economic and Housing Development.
Council President, I had some residents in the south want to make some changes to the master plan, so voting for this may stop them from being able to make the changes. Or, I mean, what does that mean? If so, I would like to defer it.
I believe what this does is that it allows to contract with someone to do the one element, to consult with the people so that the people can express their opinions on that element.
Is that correct? Yes, it's the mobility element. This is the work to design what that element will ultimately look like.
But the funding source is coming from the Transportation Planning Authority, not from the budget.
Yeah, well, my point is, I just don't want to close the opportunity for people to make necessary changes that they want to make. These people get paid already. What is preventing them from doing what they want to do as opposed to what the residents of the community would like them to do?
Mr. President, I was in the same meeting, and there were a significant number. This was not a two or three-person meeting. It was probably close to 25 to 30. And they did, I was planning to vote no, because I understood that it restricted additional time and information, that's the word I want. So I was going to vote no on it, but.
Councilman, Councilman Baraka, you want a motion to defer?
Yeah, I would like to talk to them, so.
All right. And we can invite them for this Tuesday special to give you an explanation and vote on it at the next council meeting?
Yeah, right. Because we don't know. Is there a motion to defer?
Yes.
With an invite.
Baraka, Trump? To defer?
Yep.
With an invite.
Roll call. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Quintana?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes, to defer.
Yes.
Okay, 7R3B is an authorizing and amending resolution for the Third Amendment to the Affordable Housing Element. Council pleasure? I'm sorry. This is Economic and Housing Development.
Yeah, that's the Lincoln Park.
Oh, we're adding the partner, CAPC, all right. All right, council of the whole, roll call. Yes.
Baraka?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
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 C is an authorizing resolution for the Department of Economic and Housing Development for refund, the refund the earnest money paid at an auction. Council of the whole to adopt?
Roll call.
Amador?
Ah, yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
President Payne?
7R4A is an authorizing resolution for the Department of Engineering for a professional services contract for the renovations and improvements to 16 sale leaseback buildings.
Move it. Second. Roll call.
Amador?
Yes.
Baraka?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Quintana?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Sharif? President Payne?
Yes.
B is a ratifying, authorizing, and amending resolution for change order, amending Resolution 7R4B, the meeting of February 16, 2011. This would help the City of Newark ADA compliance for the City Hall complex.
Mr. President, this is to pay an open invoice on that contract.
Okay. Council of the whole? Yes.
Baraka?
Yes.
Abstain.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Quintana?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
C is a ratifying, authorizing resolution for the Department of Engineering for a jurisdictional agreement with the state.
Council of the whole? Yes.
Baraka?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Quintana?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
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 D is an authorizing resolution for the Department of Engineering for a professional services contract for the renovations and improvements to 16 sale leaseback buildings. This is 22 Franklin Street.
Move it. Council, second. Roll call.
Amador?
Yes.
Baraka?
Yes. Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Quintana?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
President Payne?
7R9A is a ratifying, authorizing resolution for a professional services contract for the statutory order of services for 2012. This is one of the, this is the fourth item on the list that the state has asked us to defer action on while they look at the documents. Council of the whole to defer?
Roll call. Yes.
Baraka?
Yes. Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Quintana?
Yes, to defer.
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
President Payne?
B is an authorizing resolution for the Office of Municipal Council City Clerk for a whole harmless and indemnification agreement for the annual children's Easter egg hunt celebration. This is Branch Brook Park.
Roll call.
Amador?
Yes.
Baraka?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Sharif? President Payne?
Yes. The state didn't want to look at that, ask us to defer it. All right, just checking.
They not opposed to Easter, brother.
He is an authorizing resolution.
It's council and Quintana was involved, so they don't want to look at that. C?
C is an authorizing resolution for the Office of Municipal Council City Clerk, declaring the intent requesting that the US President and the US Congress redirect military spending to domestic priorities. Councilman Baraka is sponsor.
This one they may look at.
Second.
I'm sorry.
Trump. Baraka, Trump. Roll call.
Amador?
Yes.
Baraka?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Quintana?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes. Yes.
D is an authorizing resolution for the Office of Municipal Council City Clerk for a approval of a constable bond.
Finally.
E is an authorizing resolution for the Office of Municipal Council City Clerk for the constable appointment. F is a ratifying, authorizing, and amending resolution for the Office of Municipal Council City Clerk for a constable appointment. G is a ratifying and amending resolution for the Office of Municipal Council City Clerk for a constable appointment. H is a ratifying and amending resolution for the Office of Municipal Council City Clerk for a constable appointment. I is an authorizing resolution for the Office of Municipal Council City Clerk for the Board of Adjustment Appointment. And J is a various recognizing and commending resolutions. K are expressing profound sorrow and regret through 7R9K. Council of the whole to adopt?
Roll call. Yes.
Baraka?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Quintana?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Mr. President, we used to have a little contest, remember, about who had the most resolutions? Councilman Sharif, you win.
No discussion.
You win.
Who didn't get a resolution? Everybody.
Oh, my goodness.
And today he reaffirmed that.
Resolute early and often.
If I may, it's a, I remember that we wanted to extend the term of the constables to 30 years.
We are working on that ordinance. And we'll make that change, yes. In fact, I'll follow up on what's happening with that. Can you check with the corporation counsel on that?
to thirty years.
We are working on that ordinance. We'll make that change.
That's a good point.
In fact, I'll follow up on what's happening with that.
Can you check with the corporation counsel on that? Please.
7R12A is an authorizing and amending resolution for a change order, amending resolution 7R12A of the meeting of February 20th, 2010. This is phase three of the netting facilities at Jackson and Polk Street. Counselor, hold.
Counselor, hold. Roll call.
Amador.
Yes.
Baraka.
Yeah.
Trump.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Zanna.
Yes.
Raymo.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Yes.
Gentlemen, we have one added starter page, 7R9L is a whole harmonies and indemnification agreement for a youth meeting at Weekwake High School.
Yeah, one got by me for Weekwake High School, so. Counsel, when we allowed it.
We have a, we have.
Weekwake High School. Absolutely.
I don't, I don't have one.
I know the place well.
I don't have one. Oh, it's in the back of this? Is this it?
That's it.
Baraka.
Thank you.
Payne.
Payne.
Roll call.
Amador.
Yes.
Baraka.
Yeah.
Trump.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Zanna.
Yes.
Raymo.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Wait a minute, what do we, oh, I'm sorry, communications, yes.
Get out of here at a decent hour.
Yes.
B is an ordinance amending Title 19, rent control of the revised general ordinance of the city of Newark. This would add a new subsection to 19:2-5.2 to change the procedure by which landlords may obtain a tax surcharge. Councilman Sharif, you wish to defer?
Yeah, I want to defer that.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call to defer.
Sharif. Gonzalez. Roll call.
Yes.
Baraka.
Yes.
Yes.
Zanna.
Yes.
Raymo.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
President Payne.
I have a preprinted motion from Councilwoman Trump. The motion is ready to hold an appropriate memorial service for Whitney Houston with the consultation with the Houston family.
Second.
Roll call.
Amador.
Yes.
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 I have a preprinted motion from Councilwoman Trump. The motion is ready to hold an appropriate memorial service for Whitney Houston with the consultation with the Houston family.
Second.
Roll call.
Amador.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Absolutely, yes.
Zanna.
Yes.
President Rice.
Yes.
Yes.
President Payne.
We have, there were three prior motions during the course of the meeting. Councilman Baraka made the motion to follow up on the community development fund. Councilman Sharif has a motion for the information page to be added to the contracts. And Councilman Quintana has the motion for the information about the cars.
No, the cars for every department, the whole fleet.
Well, the motion that we've made several times.
And who takes home a car and where that car sleeps?
Roll call to these three motions.
Amador.
Yes.
Baraka.
Yes.
Trump.
Yes.
Gonzalez, absent, Quintana.
Yes.
Raymo, absent, Rice.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. President, motions.
Councilman Sharif, go first. Just, I urge everybody to watch a show that I take with Joe Ficcone. It really was a primer on understanding the budget from the time it comes from the mayor's office and the hearings and the amendments and all of that stuff. But it's interesting, and I think it will help residents as we go into what promises to be a bizarre budget discussion with the administration. And then finally, I just urge my council colleagues to think about, when we finally do get the schedule of the hearings, to televise them. Because I remember last year, people were frustrated because they had a sense that they didn't know what was going on. And so, you know, I appreciate that we're going to have the pre-council meetings televised. And I think, you know, the directors can come down here in the same way, and we can have those budget hearings televised as well.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Roll call.
Amador.
Yes.
Baraka.
Yes.
Trump.
Yes.
Gonzalez, absent, Quintana.
Yes.
Raymo, absent, Rice.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's Thursdays at nine o'clock and Friday at seven. That's for the budget, yes.
President Payne.
Yes. We can't leave your seat, and then things get, uh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. But I was going to really do something different this evening. I was going to go first, because I wanted to give my colleagues an opportunity after I make the statement in reference to the Star Ledger article, to, through their motions, be able to comment. But let me start with, on Tuesday, February 28th, we are going to have our Black History Month celebration, celebrating the past and the future, recognizing the contributions of African-Americans in the community. And it's here in the council chambers Tuesday, February 28th, at 6:00 p.m. to 7:30. And each council member has chosen someone to honor. And it was a very good event last year, and we're hoping to build on what we did last year. So that's Tuesday, February 28th, at 6:00 p.m. in these chambers, and the entire city is welcome. Then also, on March 1st, Thursday, March 1st, at the Hall of Records, between 9:00 and 10:30 a.m., you are invited to the Essex County March of Dimes Babies Kickoff Event, where I've been honored to be the county chair for the March of Dimes.
Very good.
And it's a real honor and privilege, as I normally say, because, you know, I was a premature baby, and, you know, my father tend to say you would never believe it based on my size. But my children were also born premature, 32 weeks, and spent, two of them spent a month in the NICU unit until they were able to go home. So I understand what it is to go through this ordeal, and hoping that, you know, everything comes out for the best. We had a doctor from UNDNJ tell her story today at a launch for the March of Dimes, where the child was in the NICU and never made it home. So this is a devastating situation in our community. Newark has a naturally disproportionate amount of premature babies that go through this. One in five children in the city of Newark are born premature, and that's naturally above the national average. So the March of Dimes has identified Newark as an area where they want to put a lot of resources in with education and nutrition, and ways that we can reduce the number of premature babies that are born in this community, because they end up with, you know, quite a few health issues through the rest of their lives. So it's something that is going to be a labor of love for me. So on Thursday, March 1st, at 9:00, 9:00 a.m. at the Hall of Records, we will have the launch for that. And then finally, based on the article that everyone saw in the Star Ledger in reference to the municipal council that we felt was disingenuous and filled with unfactual information, and we are very concerned that the major paper in this area would not check their facts, be infactual, unfactual, and do what they did. So this past Sunday, February 12th, the Star Ledger published an article purported to be an analysis of the budgets of the Newark Municipal Council and Office of the City Clerk. This article was neither balanced nor fair. It was prepared without input from the council or the clerk, and I do not consider an email sent late on Friday afternoon asking for a response for a story already developed, which was to run on Sunday, fair treatment, or a serious attempt at getting to the core of the issues. Several of the statements made in the article were incorrect, while others were made with no effort to examine the reasons behind the situation. Presently, the council and clerk are developing a formal response to this one-sided reporting, and will release our findings at a press conference here in the council chambers on Thursday, February 23rd, at 10:00 a.m. We hope to have the press conference televised, so that all the residents can hear the other side of the issues, not just the Star Ledger's unbalanced reporting. So that's it. Second. Roll call.
Amador.
Yes.
Baraka.
Yes.
Gonzalez, absent, Quintana.
Yes.
Raymo, absent, Rice.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Amador.
No motion.
Hey. Councilman Baraka? You can't do that.
I have just one motion and a couple announcements. I just want to send a letter to the owner of 232 Shepherd Avenue to put a fence around his property that they just acquired. It's been abandoned in the Osso for 10 years, so we are happy that they're about to do something with it, but we need a fence around there, because there's a bunch of illegal dumping and all kinds of other things that are happening at 232 Shepherd Avenue. The residents of Skyler Shepherd and Philomen Baptist Church are up in arms about that. Just a couple announcements. Tomorrow at 9:00 a.m., there's be a ribbon cutting for the new playground at Madison Avenue School. Unfortunately, I won't be able to be there, but I'm urging all the residents in the area to come on out and enjoy the new playground that we finally been able to put down around there, which is the school that I attended as a child. So please come if you can, just tomorrow morning at 9:00 in the morning. Tomorrow evening, from 6:00 to 9:00, will be our first walking street patrol assembling at Osborne and Mapes. So anybody that's available, do you want to do street patrols with us? We're going to start at Osborne and Mapes. That's one of the areas in the South that's been hit hard with violence. That's tomorrow at 6:00 p.m. The State of the South Ward Address, it's February 23rd, at 6:00 p.m. at George Washington Carver is a free event. You don't need a ticket to get in, even though we giving out tickets. You don't need it. It's a free event, February 23rd, 2012, at George Washington Carver School. And then lastly, the South Ward Youth Meeting at Weekwake High School, February 25th, from 1:00 to 3:00. Youth meeting, February 25th, from 1:00 to 3:00. Thank you.
Second. Roll call.
Amador.
Yes.
Baraka.
Yes.
Trump.
Yes.
Gonzalez, absent, Quintana.
Yes.
Raymo, absent, Rice.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes. Councilwoman Trump.
Thank you, Mr. President. Certainly, what I'm about to say is probably more redundant than anything that we've talked about in the last few years. And so, the loss of one of Newark's champions has hit us hard. The single thing that has been asked by the family, and I do speak with Mr. Farrell almost every night, is that in addition to praying for Whitney Houston, that we also lift the family up in prayer, because we're still here, and we're still feeling the pain. And I want to thank President Payne for having a moment of silence for her. As you heard already, I have submitted a motion that, at an appropriate time, appropriate for the family, this council will put together a memorial service that will meet the needs of the family. Please respect this family's privacy during this particular time. And those who feel compelled to be in the atmosphere, please do so respectfully. This is not a circus, but it's a loss of life, and she will definitely be missed. The other is, Councilman Raymo's had an ordinance, developed an ordinance around the newspapers that are, and the racks that have been left out on the street. I also have an issue with the clothing bins. I need to tell you, this is not charity. They bundle those clothes up, and they send them to developing countries where they are sold. They make money off of this. And so, Mr. President, at our earliest opportunity, hopefully, we can address the issue of those clothing bins, and see if we can't find a remedy, because this is not charity. This is for profit, and we need to know this. A letter to the, Mr. Clerks, a letter to the Director Kareem. Morris Avenue between Hartford and New Street has become a dumping ground. And so, if we could have that sent to their attention. That's it, Mr. President.
Second. Roll call.
Yes. Gonzalez, absent, Trump.
Yes.
Gonzalez, absent, Quintana.
Yes.
Raymo, absent, Rice.
Yes.
President Payne.
Yes. Councilman Quintana.
Mr. President, in terms of what you indicated before about the Star Ledger, I found it very interesting that they can speak about the council and put it on the front page of the Star Ledger, but the article that should have been on the front page of the Star Ledger should have been the watershed article. That should have been an article. The other, and the other issue, Mr. President, and I need this, I've been waiting for these cars, who has cars and et cetera. Now I'm trying to deal with gas. I want to know how much the departments are spending, the mayor's office and et cetera. Where does the money for the gas come, out of what budget for all the vehicles? I want to have a record, but I would like to know by month of those vehicles, where they're budgeted from, the gas for those vehicles. I'd like to know how many BlackBerrys are assigned to every division, every office within the city, within city government. I'd like to know, in terms of the police department, how many police officers, and I'm a very supportive of police, but I don't think police officers need to be driving people around. And we have some police officers detail to individuals who, A, are not elected to nothing, or maybe want to be elected to something. But I remember years ago that the only people who would have a detail would be the mayor of the city, a small detail. So when the Star Ledger talks about these 160-some police officers, it's not fair that other individuals have to be driven. I drive my car, as the city councilman, and the day I'm scared in this city to drive in this city, then I'll resign. But it's a shame that there's individuals who are driven. And I'd like to know from the administration, who are these police officers? And they can tell you that it comes out of the Police Intelligence Division? Well, I don't want to know that. How many bodies are working, where there be detail? Because if not, they need to be somewhere else. It's very serious now. So, you know, you want to put the weight on us, so we're going to put the weight on you, to let you know where we stand. And let me tell you this to you, since I've been here almost 18 years, in 18 years, I have never seen how a office of the mayor and the staff are go against the city council, even in the worst days with the previous administration. To me, it's just not fair. And that's why I'm bringing up these things, because we need to address this. Need to know, Mr. President, who are these BlackBerrys? Where these cars are being gassed? Where the gas is coming from? And who's paying for this? I know there's contract with the police officers where they have vehicles within the contract. That's not that item. I'm talking about individuals who are aides, who are different persons, why they need those vehicles, and why, I want to know the whole motor pool. And where the addresses? I don't want to know the rectory so-and-so. I want to know where they live. Because if they live in Lakewood, they live in Short Hills, or wherever they live, outside of Newark, they need to pay for that gas on their own. Because they're putting pressure on this council, we want to put some pressure on this administration.
That's it. Second. Second. Yes.
President, absent, Trump.
Yes.
Gonzalez, absent, Quintana.
Yes.
Raymo, absent, Rice.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes. Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Rice.
I know, right. A note to Neighborhood Services to clean and lean if necessary, and clear out squatters at 99 Alexander Street. Terry Seuss brought that to my attention tonight. 99 Alexander Street, there's squatters, and it needs to be cleaned and cleaned and boarded up. Also, in front of Babyland at 755 South Orange Avenue, there's been increase in drug, so to the Newark Police Department, specifically Captain Jablonski, if someone could start addressing it. And a related motion to that, we could deal with the drugs that were there, if the mini precinct that this council put money in the budget to open would actually open at that location, which is why we fought to get it there in the first place, that would help to stem some of the drug dealing that's going on across the street from Babyland. So, in a related motion, to expedite that as soon as possible, since the money's in the budget, and the lease has yet to be signed by the owner and the city. A follow-up to what Mr. Elmore asked for, which is an update to the doors at 110 Williams Street. If we can just get some kind of written correspondence as to what's going on, with the doors needing to be pushed in and not out, if there's a purchase order, or if there's some kind of requisition order, or work order, and why, what's the status of it, and when we can expect it to be done. Very quickly, the West Ward Block Federation Meeting will be on March 8th, Thursday, March 8th, at 6:00 p.m. Place to be determined. Three items that we'll be discussing for all the residents in the West Ward for our monthly Block Federation Meeting will be a strategy for Knockouts Go-Go and Uncle Sal's for knocking out their liquor license. Also, the clothing bin problem in the ward that Councilwoman Trump alluded to, as well as the post office closings scheduled for the ward. So please come out to get your marching orders. The Fourth Annual State of the West Ward Address will be on Saturday, March 17th, at 10:00 a.m. at Speedway School. Please spread the word. We will do a mailing, and there'll be flyers out, hopefully by Monday, to support that. Also, with regards to the article that came out, and let me just say that I was one of the councilperson, law and councilman, I was quoted, because I was so upset when I got this email, that I just responded, and a lot of it was out of emotion. Let me just say something, that this council has made the tough decisions when it comes to our budget, and we have not hoarded any money. It was very nice of them to say that we cut $800,000 out of the budget, but we've done a lot of things that no other council has done before in terms of our budget. But at the end of the day, the reality is, is that our staffs, and I said our staffs, I wasn't just talking about my staff, but our staffs are social service providers for a city that needs as much help as we can provide them. And I don't apologize for anything that our staffs do. They work seven days a week, and all of our staffs are underpaid. And that's the reality of, I don't care what councilperson you see here, or what person is on their staff, they work hard, and all of them are New Yorkers. All of them eat, sleep, drink, pay their bills, own homes, pay rent, take public transportation in the city of Newark. And so I don't make any, I don't take any, I don't cry about not trying to, doing everything I can do in our power to save New Yorkers' jobs. And we have done those types of things throughout our tenure on this body. I told the Star Ledger then, and I'll say it now, spend a week sitting on the third floor in three oh four, and see the problems that we have to deal with. I'm not saying that Camden does not have the same problems, or Jersey City does not have the same problems, but we know councilpeople in other cities. And nobody asks them to do in their cities what our residents demand from us on a single everyday basis, and we do it without complaint, because we know we're trying to meet the needs of our citizens. And so I wouldn't have it any other way. But I do do more as a councilperson in Newark than my colleagues do in Jersey City. I'll state on the record, my colleagues do more than the councilpersons do in Camden. And yes, if we get paid a little bit more for the work we do, it's because we do it seven days a week too. And believe me, nobody on this council is getting rich doing the work that we do going forward. And so I don't apologize for the seven-day-a-week schedule that we maintain here. It's all in the interest of serving our communities. And so what I will say is this, if the administration wants to boast and claim about what they have done to deal with this budget, I will put our record about what we have tried to do in this budget for the last four years against theirs every day. And if it's about zeroing out budgets, wait till we start doing the budget consideration in this year, and see what we zero out from the administration. That's it.
Second.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Amador.
Yes.
Baraka, absent, Trump.
Yes.
Gonzalez, absent, Quintana.
Yes.
Raymo, absent, Rice.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
President Payne.
Yes.
Mr. President, I have a motion from Councilman Raymo, letter to PSENG advising them about the concerns from homeowners about the placement of solar panels on light poles in the Forest Hills Historic District.
Second. Roll call.
Amador.
Yes.
Baraka, absent, Trump.
Yes.
Gonzalez, absent, Quintana.
Yes.
Raymo, absent, Rice.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
President Payne.
Yes.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, just one quick thing, I just wanted to give my condolences again to the Houston family. again to the Houston family as well. I just, I used to sing gospel, and so I can remember the first time I actually heard Whitney sing, Ms. Houston sing, was, was at New Hope Baptist Church when Reverend Charles E. Thomas was the pastor.
Okay.
And my pastor was formerly a Baptist preacher, who was a former assistant pastor there, had our church come and, and, and break bread, and our youth choir was singing, and Whitney was singing in her youth choir, and when they were done singing, we decided we were, we were gonna do one song, because she was that dynamic and that incredible. And anybody that knows the Houston Drinker family and, and that church, they all could sing, from, 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 from Ms. Moss and, and, and Tommy Drinker and the rest of those guys, you know, they had classic songs as gospel singers in New Hope. Before, they were big, multi-big choirs, the big choirs came from churches like New Hope, and they were well-known and well-respected, like First Baptist and Nutley and those churches. So I just wanted to say that my earliest memories was of this fine sister who could sing her you-know-what-off, and, and it was always a pleasure to say that she came from Newark, and that I knew her and knew of her family, who continue to give contributions that, you know, that her father worked here in the city of Newark, which needs to be also stated as well. They are part of Newark history, and I, for one, am just deeply, deeply saddened by this, and so my condolences and prayers go with the family as, as they go through this process, and I agree with the councilwoman, when the time is right, we should honor her contributions and her family's continuing contributions in our city the way it should be. That's all I wanted to say, Mr. President.
Second, roll call. Is that it?
That's it.
Oh, motion to adjourn.
I beat you.
I did mine, hello?
Motion to adjourn.
Hi, what, what are we doing?
We're, we're doing the roll call on Councilman Rice.
I'm sorry?
We're gonna, the roll call on the Councilman Rice's last statement, and then determine.
Yeah, I, I had said second, but then you hesitated, you hesitated, and then you made me think that I was doing something wrong.
You had started the roll call, and then you adjourned us.
So then I said motion to adjourn. Now which one is it?
Councilman Rice.
Roll call to, for, on Councilman Rice's
And I had already seconded it.
Amador.
Yes.
Baraka absent, Trump.
Yes, ma'am.
Gonzalez absent, Quintana.
Can we go until midnight?
Ramos absent, Rice.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
President Payne.
Yes.
Roll call to adjourn.
Roll call.
Amador.
You gotta give me a favor.
Can we go until midnight? Yeah, you stay here.
Baraka absent, Trump.
Yes.
Gonzalez absent, Quintana.
Stay as long as you like.
Ramos absent, Rice.
Yes. Stay all night, yes.
President Payne.
Yes.